September twenty seventh, two thousand and sixteen, Gulf County Board of County Commissioners. My pleasure.
Good morning, would you join me in prayer, please? Father, Hail with for you today, blessed you over us, highness, deliverers of our. Lord be with this board today, by conducting the great people. Always, Lord, our law enforced, but our first response. Their lives on the line daily affect our freedom. Lord be with this community, bless the great state of Florida. And precious name.
Amen.
Morning. Could you lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, before we officially open our meeting, I want to, uh, just a little reminder here for those that, uh, may not know, over the weekend, we lost a fine gentleman here out of our community, a person that really loved Gulf County, loved the city of Port St. Joe here, and that was a former, or the state trooper, that's the first time I ever met him, he was a state trooper. Later became sheriff for two terms and served fifteen plus years providing us with the, uh, 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 you know, recording our meetings, and that's Ken Murphy. I surely miss him, usually at every meeting, we'd always see the, always addressed him as sheriff, he earned that title back here. But, uh, they will have a visitation this afternoon from, uh, five to seven at the First Baptist Church here in Port St. Joe. And the funeral will be tomorrow morning at eleven AM at the First Baptist Church here in Port St. Joe. And, uh, all of our, keep, keep Miss Betty and the daughters and all the grandchildren, all keep them in your prayers. Ken was a good man, I remember we used to listen to him for a lot of you. We had a radio station here, WJOE, am I correct?
Your own.
And when he wasn't out, a state trooper and all, he would, he served as a disc jockey there and, uh, listened to a lot of his, uh, what was his favorite song, Don?
Hard Road Man.
Hard Road Man, uh, okay, but anyway, I just wanted to remind us of that, we lost a very dear friend here in Ken Murphy, thank you. All right, this time, we will call the regular meeting, uh, September the twenty-seventh, regular meeting of the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners to order. As always, thank you for coming out, we have a good audience this morning. At the end of the meeting, uh, we have a few, we don't have that long of agenda, it's a thick agenda, but it carries a lot of just annual reports and, uh, all in it, but at the end of the meeting, it'll be a time for public discussion. Anyone in the audience has anything that they would like to bring before the board or discuss, you will have that time to do that, I just want to remind you of that. So, having said, the meeting called to order, the first order of business for the agenda, and we're gonna try to stick right with the agenda here, is the consent agenda. As always, does anyone in the audience have any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? If you do, raise your hand and be recognized. All right, having none, we'll turn now to our staff, does anyone, any staff member have any question? Any of the staff members concerning the cons- counselor?
Mr. Chairman, if I can, uh, ask the commission to pull pages one oh eight, one oh nine, so we can discuss during, uh, board business.
Pages.
One oh eight and one oh nine.
One oh eight, you need a pen? Here, just happen to have. Thank you. All right, thank you, sir. Uh, any other staff member concerning the consent agenda? All right, now we'll turn last to the board, any member on the board have any concerns or questions with the consent agenda? Having none, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda excluding, you want to, when do you want to discuss this, Mr. Attorney, when it comes, you, okay, all right. Uh, excluding one oh eight and one oh nine for further discussion.
Good move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Macklemore?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barnes, any further board discussion? Uh, anyone in the audience, we've done been there, any opposition, if not, motion passes five and oh to accept the consent agenda excluding, for the time being, pages one oh eight and one oh nine. Mr. Butler, are you ready?
Ready, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my first item, and not sure Pastor Swiney is in the audience today or not, but probably need his help. Uh, he made a request to the county commission that a portion of Pompano Street in Highland View be closed, one block be closed for an hour and a half, hour and forty-five minutes every Wednesday night for church. But it's something I could handle, you know, for one time situation, but this is like every Wednesday night. And even though the board may not be able to make a decision on it, they may want to go back and let public work, do some work and see what's going on, but if Pastor Swiney can make a presentation to you on that one request, to close a portion of Pompano in Highland View for Wednesday night church.
All right, is he present?
Yes.
You are, yeah, right over here, this, Mr. Butler, you want me to?
Yeah, yeah.
Bring him up?
Yes.
Swiney, come up, please. Is this Roberts, uh, is, is that mic on there?
Yes. Pastor Kevin Swiney, S.W.I.N.E.Y.
This is not Mrs. Roberts, excuse me, just, we're having some, what we call them, technical difficulties, whatever, I don't see any time here.
It's, it's here, it doesn't work up there.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, you have the floor, sir.
Not a problem, can I approach the bench?
Yes, you can.
We are just looking on Wednesday night, um, our student ministries, we pick up children and minister to kids from Mexico Beach, I would have been sure picking up on high school. What we're asking for is just an hour and a half on Wednesday nights to block this one portion of Pompano for child safety. We average anywhere from sixty to seventy-five students on Wednesday night.
Right, right.
If you look at what I've handed to you, on this map shows Pompano between Parker and Covia. Now, the house on the corner of Parker and Co-, uh, Parker and Pompano, the driveway faces Parker. So, if a portion is blocked past their driveway on Pompano, all the way to the end, those are parishioners, nobody else on that block has exceptions to this close for an hour and a half on Wednesday night on a weekly basis. With seventy-five children, um, it's hard to always keep an eye on kids, because we range student ministries from kindergarten to twelfth grade, and we do outdoor activities. So with this portion of street being blocked off during that timeframe, it provides added safety for our children and our students, and less worry for us leaders that are trying to minister and pour into them. So again, the request is to just be able to block a portion of Pompano between Parker and Covia on Wednesday nights from six to seven thirty due to the safety of the children.
All right, sir. That's your question, thank you, right over here. How many, how many families would be affected by this?
None.
None, zero?
None, the two houses on Pompano that are facing the church are parishioners. They're, um, they're, they come to church, they're, they're congregation members, they're members of the local church in Highland View. There's nobody that would be affected other than those who just want to cut down Pompano to get to the next portion of Pompano past Covia.
All right, sir.
Um, any other questions?
Oh, I, uh.
Do we need, do we need a motion?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make the motion that, um, and unless the sheriff or the county administrator have any other issues, or the county attorney regarding this, um, as we all know, the way Highland View is laid out, you just have to go over one block to get through, so it really doesn't, um, prevent any traffic getting through, it's a community oriented church and area, and I think it's a reasonable request, if it creates issues, then we'll address that in the future. But I'll make that motion that we.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Grant that.
Second. Second by Commissioner Macklemore, any further discussion on this? We have this up in Allevaupin, we will hit you, and, uh, I know the First Baptist Church and the, they had tidings assembly on Wednesday night, and they're really, the youth is a secret to all of this, you got to get the messages to the youth, that's our future.
Yes.
All right, sir.
If you look at the picture, if, uh.
Sure.
Pass that around, that was when Captain Herring was there from, um, City and, uh, backing the blue, I mean, that night, we had fifteen regulars out and had over sixty there, so.
Good.
And we've come from a handful to, in, 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 in the next month or two, we'll have a hundred, and, uh, that can go on record.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, sir.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing, um, I guess one, one issue would be, how do we go about physically, um, accomplishing this each week? And also, uh, Mr. Cuthrin, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
I just need to know whose responsibility is to close the road and reopen it, and with what kind of tools you're gonna use?
Hey, I answer that, up in, in our community, we have barricades, and, uh, the church has the barricades, they go out at a certain hour and they place the barricades over, take the barricades back, that's how it's handled.
Yes.
There, now, how you would want to handle it, you know, there's no point in the, the, uh, road department have to go out and set them up and then have to go back and take them, that's what we do, and it works wonderful.
We've closed it in the past, and we've used cones from the actual county, I know that I talked with Captain Buchanan, and we've gotten access, but we're looking if this is, uh, approved to be able to make barricades that house at the church that we set up, we remove promptly, not to abuse the situation, but again, just provide that added safety to the children.
All right, sir, thank you. All right, we have a motion, any questions, anyone in the audience, before we vote here on this motion to grant this request, all right? Having none, we have a motion, we have a second, any opposition, if not, motion passes five and oh. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day and.
Can I get a copy?
Absolutely.
Do you need this picture back here, sir?
No, I want you to keep it, we've got plenty, I just want people to know what's going on in Gulf County.
All right, thank you.
That's good, we need that all over Gulf County.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
All right, Mr. Butler, I think we were with you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, my second item is yesterday, there was a request made for Pan Care to be able to put a sign up at the Health Department building on Gerson Avenue. Um, Brett reviewed the, um, LDRs on it, the only thing we see is, um, there's a limitation on one sign per parcel, but this is, this is different, it's two businesses, you've got the Health Department in that building, and also Pan Care.
Yeah.
Um, I re, that's why I brought it straight to the board, uh, my recommendation to the board is to allow that second sign to go on that piece of land, or Pan Care.
Are you a motion?
I made that.
Commissioner, um.
Mr. Barnes, yeah, Mr. Barnes.
Motion.
Mr. Barnes spoke up, Mr. Barnes spoke up first.
Second?
I second it.
You're going second?
Yeah, I second.
Let me get this, reverse this back, now, y'all both came on at the same time, Barnes, okay. All right, any further board discussion on the sign for Pan Care, and that's two different businesses operating on the one roof, so they're separated. Board, anyone in the audience have any concerns, if not, any opposition, having none, motion passed five and oh. Butler?
Mr. Chairman, previous board meeting, the board gave direction for staff make contact with DOT concerning golf cart crossing on Saint Joe Beach across Highway ninety-eight. Received an email back, um, from DOT, and they're saying, they're saying that the, uh, the idea is good, DOT likes the idea, but what Gulf County needs to do is to tell them where it's gonna be. Saint Joe Beach is probably three miles long, if not longer, and it's, you know, it's probably room for more than one golf cart crossing, it's gonna be hard to have one and accommodate people in Beacon Hill and this end of Saint Joe Beach. But some shape or form of fashion, we need to determine where we want these, now, these will be at the county's expense. Talking with the city yesterday, you know, I think the city paid five thousand dollars for the last one they put in here in Port St. Joe. But, um, uh, in the, probably to take all in consideration, um, on one hand, it may not be in our lifetime, and on the other hand, it may be two or three years down the road, bypass will be made, and that'll be a county road, so it won't be an issue anymore. But, um, if we're gonna look, go down the road and we have to do the study work, and we have to pay for the study work and the engineering ourselves, um, if we're gonna do it, we need to determine where they're gonna be at. Where the one it will be, or where the multiple ones will be, it could be two or three. So, some shape, form, or fashion, if probably a, a committee or something to get together, or a community committee to get together to determine where they should be. Now, once these golf carts cross Highway ninety-eight, if we so choose to do so, I don't think they'll be able to travel up and down the right of way ninety-eight, and they're gonna be parked at the end of that crosswalk, probably at somebody's house. And, um, so it's a bunch of things I think we need to consider when we do it. Probably the easiest thing would be when, when that becomes a county road, then there's not a regulation prohibiting that. But meantime, if we weren't pursued, golf cart crossing Saint Joe Beach, we need to determine where they're gonna be located. Well, what was one or multiple ones, I'm thinking one, you'd have to travel a mile and a half, wanting to be to get to the center one, and that might be fine.
But you can't travel, uh, 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 on a state highway, you. You've got to go through the back streets and the back alleys, but when you cross ninety-eight, that's it.
And if the board wants us to, to put in for one center, centrally located golf cart crossing, that'd be easy to tell DOT, and we can start the process, and we can always do it again if you want to do it again. You may find it's ca, uh, cost prohibitive too. But this, I want to bring that up, I just got this email from DOT, from Brian Pettis, talking with Commissioner Barnes, he's got a similar request out on Cape San Blas, I think he's gonna bring up later, for a golf cart crossing at Dooms Drive, and it would be a similar thing, at least you know where it is, that's gonna be Dooms Drive. But we may or may not, um, meet the criteria for a golf cart crossing out on ninety-eight. If board so chooses, we'll, we'll pick one right in the center location between Bay County Line and Pine Street, and let that be it, whatever that closest road is. If you want two or three, we need to, to determine more.
And you're gonna also.
Okay, let me go over here, you commissioners in the district, you represent, you have the floor.
If it, if there's gonna be minimal areas to cross, you're gonna have to make sure there is a place for those carts to be on the water side. The land side is easier, obviously, to deal with, um, and that there's actual beach access. And once we put that cross there, that people can traverse legally to get to the beach, and not just crossing over, um, private land that they've crossed for years. So I, I do think that it's a, um, an issue that has to be looked at and discussed, and the, the cost, like you said, is it something that we can only afford to do one? Uh, there will be a crosswalk put in at the park, at Beacon Hill Park, but that's not necessarily a golf cart crossing, but should a golf cart crossing be, um, incorporated with that, because there is legal beach access, and the legal beach access at Saint Joe Beach is limited, there are obviously several at Beacon Hill, but I do think it's something that needs to be discussed, and, um, it's gonna take a little bit of time to look at all those variables.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Commissioner Macklemore?
You know, I agree with Commissioner Brian, it don't make sense to spend five thousand dollars for a crossing to nowhere, not in my book, not in my mind. So I, I think it's really something that we really need to look at real close before we, uh, especially before we spending money on it.
And, and people are crossing, um, so it would be better to have a place where they can cross more safely, because it's designed for them to cross. Um, because it will probably be a while before that bypass road is completed, um, but I do think that it will take some consideration and, um, some thought.
Right.
Maybe we put it on a future agenda to give some notice to people that it's gonna be discussed by then, maybe we have a cost, what one will cost.
Need to check into all that, and we'll get the people, I know, uh.
Public input would be wonderful.
Exactly, we need theirs, uh, I'll, a little humor, when they built the courthouse down here, a former commissioner, Mr. Whitfield, he said, put it wherever you want it, I'll find it. So wherever you want the crossing, we'll find it. But, uh, anyway, Don, let's just, uh, look into that, it's on our minds now, and it's aware to the public here and out, and we'll get some, remember, we got the sheriff over here that'll be involved, and it's a state high, state federal, I guess, highway. When it does become a county, which it will, then we're at liberty to, uh, pretty much do as the wishes of the people. But would you, and let's just come back on this later, all right, sir, thank you, you still have the floor.
Uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman.
Yes.
I got a similar situation, uh, out on the Cape, had some people to, going in Dooms Drive, and they've asked if we would look into it, and, uh, I, I went and talked to Mr. Butler, and if we could just look into it, matter of fact, I, I wrote up a motion that allow the staff to start permitting the process to FDOT and allow the golf cart crossing thirty E there at Dooms Drive.
Don, do you? Chairman.
I, I'd like to make a motion, if it's in, in appropriate time now, wait.
All right, let, let, let's hold here just, all right, just a minute, I'll come right back to you. Mr. Butler, and then I want to come over here to Commissioner on this, we're gonna do just a study on here, now, we got a motion, or, you know, a possible motion here, do you want to bundle this in?
The, I'd be a good idea to bundle it in, now, what we do know, you want to do it at Dooms Drive.
Dooms Drive, so we've got a designated point.
That, that allows DOT taking next step, and they will tell us, I think it's chapter five of the manual, that we have to go by, and we, by, what we do, if you go ahead and do it, and then too, by the next board meeting, we have the cost of what it's gonna cost to do that, and, um, and we'll see if we want to take it next step or not.
Okay.
But we can go ahead, and we can tell DOT that we want to pursue the idea, and they, they not doing it, they going, okay, send it back to us, and it's for us to do, then we send it back to them for approval.
Right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Macklemore?
I'll second his motion, uh, well, he's got, he's got a motion. I'll make that motion in. He got a motion, so I'll second his motion.
All right.
But, uh, you know, questions, it seems like to me it's two different issues here. Mr. Barnes, is this Dooms Drive, is that beach access? Beach access, that's where they can drive down on the beach. On, dive on the beach, okay, so, yeah, I, I think we need to look at that real close, and let Mr. Butler combine them together and come back to the board.
All right, we got a motion, a second, any further board discussion on this? We've got a designated area, anyone in the audience, any of the beach people, or I say the beach people, the people in District Five, or anything where this will be? Having none, is there any opposition to Commissioner Barnes' motion? None, motion passed five and oh, Mr. Butler, take care of that, please. Are you through, Don?
I'm done.
You're through, thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Chairman, I have two items this morning, the first one is a TDC memo you have on your desk from Ms. Adams. Uh, when the consent was submitted last week, a change order was pulled from the consent, um, and an amendment to a contract with one of their vendors for website hosting and maintenance, uh, replaced it. In the process of putting that contract amendment that you just approved through your consent, this change order on the second page was also inadvertently pulled with it. The change order, uh, is services that are not identified, um, unlike the amendment to the contract that you just approved. This is, uh, a winter brand identity and winter fun webpage service to be provided by the vendor, uh, Ms. Jenkins has been working with Outpost Design. So this change order is for twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars, she has a memo from her advisory council recommending unanimous vote of them doing this service over the winter, uh, but we need the board's approval of this change order this morning.
Thank you, counselor.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Commissioner Quinn.
Second for discussion.
Second by Commissioner Macklemore.
Yep, just, just one.
For discussion, all right, sir.
Just one question to Mr. Hammond, have you looked at this, Mr. Hammond, on this?
Yes, sir.
You're okay, everything's fine? Who with it?
Right, your second's standing, for discussion, good deal, any other board member? Anyone in the audience? No opposition, motion passed five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, the second item I have, uh, we asked to pull pages one oh eight and one oh nine of your consent agenda. Um, if you go to those pages in your packet, you'll see that, um, they are the enclosure from the, uh, Department of Health. Uh, Ms. Sandy Martin had submitted, uh, both the renewal of the core contract and the fee schedule for the coming year. Um, we asked if we could, um, actually going back a year, we've been working with Marcia and Sandy on this, um, and they've been pleased to report that Pan Care now is running their FQHC. Um, one of the things we met with Ms. Rhonda over at clerk's office back in August, uh, Mr. Butler, uh, Ms. Martin, uh, Rhonda, Ms. Marcia, and what we wanted to do is accomplish, just reflecting in the core contract, the, um, Pan Care lease payments for the half of that health department, or the square footage that they're using. Um, we had discussed with Rhonda what would meet our auditing requirements, and we, uh, had discussed some language, uh, changes to section four of the core contract. Everything else was, um, looked acceptable and is approved, but what we need today is, we need the commission to do two things, is one, an authorizing vote to authorize, uh, the health department to receive those lease payments from Pan Care on a monthly basis or quarterly basis. And then if that is approved from you as a commission, then we'll insert a third, uh, provision in section four showing that that, those funds are a pass-through, and I think it's about a hundred, and I don't, I think it's approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars per year in payments, um, in maintenance costs that will be reflected in your core contract going forward. And those would be lease payments from Pan Care to the health department, but it would originally start with payments to the county.
To the county.
And then, and then Ms. Marcia, Ms. Sandy have been obviously doing a lot of improvements to the building, and would utilize that, um, rent from Pan Care to continue to maintain that county facility, um, which they've been doing historically in the past, now you have a third party, you just approved their signage out front, um, we just need your approval to make those two changes, which is one, for us to note it in the core contract, and for Ms. Rhonda to, um, uh, report that in auditing on the annual basis that that is a pass-through. And with your approval, um, I'll make that change and have the chairman's authorization to sign it, uh, following today's meeting.
Thank you. All right, members, or the attorney here, you're requesting, I have a motion.
So moved.
Pushing by Commissioner Barnes. Are you a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner. All right, now we're open for board discussion, one on the board. Concerns, with it? One in the audience. Opposition to Mr. Barnes' motion? Motion passed five and oh, Mr. Attorney, take care of that and call me.
Yes, sir. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Hammond?
I don't have anything, sir.
You have anything, this summer? Larry?
I don't have anything.
Right. Good. Herring? Come on, Joe.
Yes, sir.
Whitfield? Come on. Adams? There we go, this is Adams, I guess, all right, Lynn? Anything, Ms. Rhonda? Sheriff? Thank you, thank you, thank you, Sheriff. Oh, boy, all right, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, then we will move into, uh, the, we're through with the county staff business, we'll move into the board business. Who would like to do the honors of leading off, it doesn't matter to me, we can go either way, Mr. Brian, we. Care to do the honors?
Um, uh, first of all, I, I just wanted to thank, um, Mr. Cuthrin and Mr. Collinsworth for working on the limited maintenance agreements for the White City drainage ditches. Um, and the board passed those, those in the, um, consent agenda this morning, so I know there's a lot more work to be done in that regard, but starting that ball rolling, and I do appreciate y'all getting that into this consent agenda. Then I also wanted to ask for, um, from the county administrator, an update for the public, and, um, just to kind of fill the public in on the situation with the, uh, insurance rates regarding the, the fire ratings. If he could just give a, kind of an overview of that for the public.
Is this, uh, person, is Brad here today? Brad Price?
Where is Ms. uh?
Yeah.
Manuel, is she here, Denise?
ISO ratings for the nine voluntary fire departments.
Okay.
They go across scale, I think the best one we have is four, and the worst one we have is ten. We, um, we had half our fire department who were very good ISO ratings until new ISO regulations come out about a year ago.
Those regulations are pretty stiff, put a lot of weight on, uh, participation and training and, and three firemen going to a fire doesn't count, where four does count. And a lot of time, we, you just don't have the fourth person, you don't have enough people in, in the Highland View Fire Department, Dover Street Fire Department. Those two specifically don't have a lot of people. And we have others. Halls Creek does it either. But, um, um, the fact that we don't have enough people in those departments, we, um, we, we lost a good rating on that, and it pretty, the higher the number, the worse the rating. And so, uh, it's been worked on. Uh, Brad is working on, he's, he's got a class, I think, right now in White City, uh, training class for firefighter one. And trying to get more, some people in Halls Creek, coming down, Halls Creek Fire Department come down to that training. And, and that will continue on from fire department to fire department, try to get the numbers up. Now, I mean, the law's been this way a few years. You have to be a firefighter one in order to be a firefighter, in order to count. And it's getting every, every time, every year, it's like it's a little bit tighter and a little bit tighter. At one point in time, uh, those of us that took the forty-hour course, we were grandfathered in, and then as time went on, you didn't get grandfathered in, or that went away and had to take additional hours. But Commissioner, the, um, um, the rating in Dover Street, Dover Street has the best ISO when they did their survey. The water system could not have got a better rating than the one in Dover Street. That gave Dover Street, the reason Dover Street come up with a very good ISO rating. What we also don't have is, we don't have personnel. We don't have people to respond. And so, Dover Street fell from grace as Highland View fell from grace. And I think Highland View may only have a handful, three, four, five, six people. I may be off on that, but very few people. I think maybe only be three people in Dover Street. And it's certainly, um, always trying to recruit people to get into the fire department, and we got a notice on the website to do so, and and, uh, in the community, those firemen, I know in, in my community, we're always looking for especially younger people come in and pull hose, because older ones get tired pulling hose, but, um, uh, we're, we're continuing to looking for new people. But the, I'm not sure exactly what your question is, but we.
The ISO rating affects, um, the cost of people's, homeowner's insurance. I'm just trying to make it clear for the public. And, um, you know, I have, uh, this is something that we've discussed that was an issue that was coming, and I have also been out trying to recruit folks over the last couple of years um, to work as, um, to participate in the volunteer fire departments, and the recruiting is extremely difficult. And, um, there, there, I can't speak for the entire county, because I'm not all over the county in that regard, regarding the fire departments, but in, I know in my district and that area that there, there is, um, it's, it, it's somewhat of a closed system, and I think that the fire departments need to open up to other folks, and it's, it's been in the hands of the same people for a long time, and people feel that they're not welcome. And this is something that we need to work on. We had the same issue several years ago with our EMS department quite a few years back. And it's not uncommon for people to feel like they, that they own something. And we need to be cautious of that for the people of Gulf County and for their insurance rates, that that is not what's happening with some of our fire departments. So, um, that is something that this board needs to look at. We need to have an open system that anyone who's qualified is welcome. Um, and Mr. Butler, while I have your attention, can you please give us an update on the, um, status of the White City boat ramp?
I think there's multiple parts. One being the building that this board voted to allow Commissioner Macklemore be the person to, to determine what to do next at the Highland View Boat Ramp. I mean, it's a long story, but the wall is leaning over towards the basin. At some point in time, the wall probably need to be removed or a portion of it taken out. And the commissioner had a game plan to, to do a part of it to alleviate the part that's really leaning out into the basin. So, one idea is to remove the building. The building has asbestos in it. The cost to remove asbestos was pretty much astronomical, and I put, that sort of put a slowdown on doing it, uh, doing anything in it, but at some point in time, we, um, we've got to determine what to do with the wall. The cost estimate for a new wall is way high. Um, the, um, to fix what we have is, is not going to be exactly cheap. I think this board agreed to put twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars of, uh, BP money into the project. And if we, if we go the route, uh, removing the building, we're going to have to buy that ten thousand dollars, whatever it is, eight thousand dollars, whatever, I forget what the number is, for asbestos removal. So.
Well, this board did decide to remove the building, and, um, Mr. Macklemore did weigh in on, on his thoughts, and we discussed it, and clearly the wall has to be repaired. There's no way around it. We talked about sloping the ground. We talked about pulling out the building first to relieve that pressure. I do know that there's, um, asbestos in that building, and that's the holdup. But the asbestos won't magically go away. The asbestos needs to be removed, and the county has to pay the cost of removing the asbestos. Now, I, it has been a regular mode of operation here for you to drag your feet with issues in District Three.
I'm not dragging my feet.
Let me finish. And refuse to discuss with me. You've brought up several issues today that you have not discussed with me. I am still the Commissioner of District Three, but this is how you've conducted yourself
I see you want some up.
For the entire four years. You, Mr., Mr. Butler, you need to contact me. I am here almost every day, and I am, I, I have a county cell phone, and I have a county email address. And if you have an issue for District Three, you need to contact me. You never have. Now, on this White City Boat Ramp, this board has discussed it, and it, there's no doubt in my mind that once I am out of this office, that you will accomplish everything at that White City Boat Ramp, and I hope that happens, because it needs to be done. That is an important part of this county, and people from all over the county and outside of the county use that boat ramp. And it's, it is a shame that that, that it has been in disrepair. Now, it's been in disrepair for probably ten, fifteen years or more. This is not something that happened overnight, but this is something that we could have accomplished, we could have repaired prior to now. It's all about priorities, and this boat ramp should be one of our priorities. Um, the asbestos has to come out, and you've, if there's one contractor that does it, if there's two, you've got to find a way to do it. This board gave direction to you to move forward, and it needs to be done. I, I just want to make that point. It's all very clear. I could sit here.
You haven't given any money to remove asbestos. You gave twenty thousand dollars, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars to do a project. It's probably more like a fifty thousand dollar job. Asbestos seem like it's eight or ten thousand dollars. I may be wrong on that number, may be off on that number. But you know what the number is. You've been knowing what the number is. You have made the first motion to say, let's do the asbestos removal. It, it is something that we did not count on.
The board already voted to move forward to remove the building.
You gotta, you gotta put money with that. You can say.
And you have an approval. What is your approval level for, for funding, Mr. Butler?
If there's no money there, there's no approval, Mr. Butler.
Commissioner, let's get back, axe and leave the personalities out of this, please. Question is, I know I have the, yeah, question is, what are we going to do about the boat ramp at, at White City and this asbestos? That's the original question here that was asked, and so let's just stick to that, and let's see if we can't come to something here this morning and move forward with this. I agree, it's been, been quite a while. I'm total agreement with that, but let's, let's keep our personalities out of this, please, and respect each other. Now, Commissioner, you had the floor. Do you want to yield of this, Commissioner, or do you want to?
I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear what Commissioner.
All right, thank you. Now, let's come over here, Mr. Macklemore, being that you were involved with it, would you please?
Definitely involved in it. I, I met with Mark on this. We discussed this project. We discussed it on the board, like Commissioner Bryan has said. We did run into a snag with the high bid on the moving the asbestos. But I think we all agree, in order to cut costs, fix the problem, we have to remove that building. I think we're all in agreement there. My question to you, Mark, I think you did the homework or legwork on it. What was the final bid on moving the asbestos? Abesta, because we kicked it around a little bit there, best I can remember, and didn't really key up on it.
What, what we went out for bid, but, but I, I need to interject something here before we get too far out of way.
All right, hold up right here. Let's go here.
And then I'm, I don't know of any slowdown on the project, except for this is my slowdown, and I have expressed this to many people in the room. The landfill project has been my biggest ordeal that I've ever faced at the county. And I'm in control of all the equipment that we're going to use to, to tear down that building, including inmate crews and equipment. With the landfill project going on, I have every excavator that, that we have a man to actually put on to run on that project still to this day. The, the biggest thing that I know of in the county that we need to do is close the landfill, so that we can get that off and get that screw money back to the county. And that's what I've been working toward. I mean, we have two excavator operators right now at Five Points working today. We're not done. And I'm trying to get that project done. Until we get that done, the equipment that we're going to use to tear that building down is still tied up. So, so that's, from public works standpoint, me in control of the equipment and the men, I've got to get that project done. I, I totally agree White City needs to be done. It's a, it's been an issue for a long time, and, and I, it's one of those things, I promise you we will get to it. But in, in my world, I'm trying to wait until we get what I consider priority one, which is landfill close, before I move excavators offsite. We have a huge ditch in Weewall that has got to be cleaned out at some point, Halls Bottom Ditch. I don't have an excavator I can send to it. I talked to water about it. I said, I've got to put that off until at which time I can send equipment to it. So, from public works standpoint, that, that's my slowdown. I've, I've got to finish that project.
Okay. I, I, I fully understand, Mark, and, and that's, that's understandable. But we bid it out, or, or we researched to bid to get the asbestos removed. You don't need a machine for that. Is that correct?
That's correct. That'd be an outside contractor.
Yeah. My suggestion to the board, hold on, Michael, because I, I think we got approval from this board to put about twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars of BP funds into that project. Is that correct? Okay. Let's move forward with it. Let's go ahead and, and award the bid, if we have to award the bid to get the asbestos moved. That's, that has to be done.
Mr. Macklemore, I'll make the motion we spend the eight thousand now.
Yeah. Okay, well, but maybe, maybe by that time, Mark, you may be freed up enough that we can go in there and, and demolish the building and do what we intended to do. So, this is no big deal. Michael, what you got?
Well, just a minute here. Uh, hold on. Let's get back in order here now. Uh, Commissioner Macklemore, I agree with you there. Bid came in, it was high, way higher than, I mean, it was just out of, we're only talking about people less than this room, around, what was it, seven hundred, how much? Two hundred and fifty square feet?
It's, it's, it's an unbelievable cost for.
Yeah. Uh, eight thousand dollars to take down just right here. Now, my suggestion is that we find, it, it's got to be a license, someone that handles this, but go out and see if we can find somebody. I'm sure somebody can do this for under eight thousand dollars. That's, my goodness, that's terrible. Now, you still, uh, the commissioner yield to you over here?
Yeah, and.
You have anything else, and?
I do.
Okay, well, come on, come on. I just wanted to let you know that. We're going to do that.
It may seem like, uh, a lot of money, you know, for a small building, but you dealing with dangerous hazardous material here. Eight thousand dollars don't seem ridiculous to me to get the project done. I think, I, I think that's fair, you know? But we do need to move forward with this project, and we, this board has voted for the money to, to do that with. So, I, I don't see the big deal. I want to hear from Mr. Hammond. He's about to bite in two over there.
We will. Now, it was, uh, let me interject here. We're only eight thousand. Somewhere floating around was that we had found a contractor that would do it for seventeen hundred dollars somewhere in that neighborhood. Now, whatever happened there, I don't know. Now, Commissioner, you just, you on hold for right now? Mr. Hammond?
I, I don't want Mark to take the blame. I'll take the blame, because he and Lee came to me at the first budget meeting and asked me what we wanted to do if we wanted to rebid. Yeah, or, you know, award the bid. We bid it twice. The first bid was astronomically high. We think we can get it done for twenty-five hundred dollars or less. That is a reasonable price. And we think, we thought that person that gave us that quote was going to bid the second time. No one bid the second time. So, we either have to reject all bids and, and decide that it's under the bid limit and award it to somebody, or we have to rebid. That's where we're at. But we don't need to spend eight thousand dollars. That's just throwing money away. We don't have a dime for this budgeted. The money that you budgeted for the whole project, however, was for that wall and fixing the wall. If you want to use some of it for that, that's fine, but, but let's don't waste eight thousand dollars on something that we can get for a lot cheaper. We can't legally do it. Our crews can't legally do it. Our inmates can't even be in the building until we get it out, so we need to do it legally and properly. But it's not Mark's fault. I asked him if he, if he had the equipment to tear it down, if we had somebody to go. He said, no, it's going to be several months to get the landfill closed. So, there was no hurry at that particular time, and so I'll take the blame for that, but let's, please don't waste eight grand giving it to that original bidder.
Ma'am, ma'am, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Now, one more time.
Yeah, yeah. And I got to go back over here. Commissioner, go ahead.
Michael, we're, we're, we're meeting again October the twenty-second. Is that correct? When, at our next board meeting, at our next, at our next board meeting, y'all need to have a number, and we need to ready, be ready to move on this project.
Because when he gets through.
Fair enough, isn't it?
We need to put that as a priority.
But, I mean, that's fair enough. To move to, to remove the asbestos. And whenever you get through with the landfill, Mark, then we need to move on. When we get an open machine, you get the equipment ready and all, but this is a project that we need to get on. And our next board meeting, I'll be looking for some numbers or something, what direction that we're going to need to go with this. Is that fair enough?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. That all, Commissioner. Now, Commissioner Brian, let's come back over here.
I just want to just make a, a couple of points. One is that the, the money was, was budgeted towards the wall, but part of shoring up the wall is removing the building, so you can't get to the wall until you get through the building, Mr. Hammond. So, I understand, you're, you know, you're parsing out the funds. If the point is to fix the wall, which is, has become really an emergency status, the way that it is falling through, because it's been for so many years, and you've got to get the building out to get to the wall, which is something we discussed here, then that becomes part of the funding for the wall. And absolutely, Mark does not take any blame. Mark has been put in charge of a public works department that is underfunded, understaffed, it's got old equipment. This is something I've been arguing about for the four years that I've been on this board. The two things that this county needs to provide to the people of Gulf County is public safety and public works. Those are the main things that we need to provide. It's the only place they can get it, is from this county. And he is working with just half probably of what he should have. He's doing an awesome job, and he's made my point that there is not enough funding going into public works. We are funding the wrong things. We've, we're, we're all over the board here in this county. We're doing funding things, doing things that government shouldn't be doing. We need to think about the purpose of government, and we need to make sure we're funding the public safety, EMS, fire, and public works. And, Mark, thank you for making my point. You did it very well. So, um, I will expect some better information to move forward, and if it's eight thousand, if that's the only way we get the asbestos out, then we get the asbestos out with the eight thousand. It has to be disposed of. We need to follow the law, and we can't just sit back and, and wait for something magical to happen.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner, you still have the floor.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, I withdraw my motion. Thank you.
Commissioner, the Ohio floor.
Yeah, I just want to make a, one more point, and this is a point that I've made many times, and, and I'm sure everybody's tired of hearing it. But I, I hope, I, I think that one of the reasons we went to one meeting a month was so that, uh, you know, I would have less time to address the public with the issues that I continually complain about on how the county conducts business. So once I'm off this board, I hope that you will consider going back to two meetings a month. So here we are today, and we have our agenda, and it's two hundred pages of consent and two pages of items to be discussed. So this was all approved in one vote when we first came in, and then this is all we got for the rest of the meeting. And as you've heard, Mr. Butler has brought up many issues that were not included in the agenda, were not part of anything notified to the public, and and that is a problem. And I I hope that once I'm gone and you all feel more comfortable, that maybe you can move back to two meetings, so you'll have less in the consent agenda and uh, think about having a little bit more public involvement and discussion. And um, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna thank Mark. I did get a call the other day on on a job that the county was working on, and and the individual said, would you be sure and thank Mark and his people? That uh, he did a very good job on a drainage problem and uh, you know, we don't brag on our people enough. I I I think we should, you know? I uh, you get lots more work and lots more things done by bragging on somebody. Each one of us, I don't, I can't ever think of a time that I've called somebody and and needed something done, and it it was done just like that, you know? I know sometimes we have some backlog, I have to wait because other things are more important, but uh, I appreciate each and every one of y'all that work for the county. Y'all been very good to me and did the public a good job too, so. Uh, I wanna brag a little bit on my my fire department since we've been talking about that. Uh, South Gulf County, let me tell y'all, uh, we got a good fire department. We, I know we uh, we got some people that come and go and some people who maybe go, don't live down there all the time, but I can tell you right now, you got some people who care. You got some people who look after the equipment. When there's a call, they go. And uh, I I do appreciate that, so. I also have one thing I I think we were talking about too was uh, the speed limit. I don't know if Mr. Behage is here today or not.
He's on the agenda.
I'll bring that up because I'm I'm way there. We'll do something about that for you, but uh, as far as that goes, I got everything else taken care of except for Mr. Behage. When you come, we'll we'll help him.
Be recognized back then.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Macklemore.
Yes, I have one comment.
Sure.
Come November, I don't care how many meetings they have a month. I'll be honest with you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, more serious, Commissioner Quinn.
That's that's it? That's all you got?
That's all.
That's all? Come on, Commissioner.
I just got, I just got a couple of things. Like uh, Mr. Barnes said, I do want to brag on the uh, on Mark also. Every time I call Mark, he's he's always came through for me and uh, make sure everything worked out for him, so thank you, Mark, and your staff. Uh, and also I want to brag on the staff. Every time I call them, um, they've also came through for me. They've been, they've been doing a fantastic job for me. If I got an issue, uh, I pick up the phone, I call them, and I, if I can't get it done, they'll, 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 they'll lead me in the right direction, how to get something accomplished. So a huge thank you to uh, Mark and 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 the staff here at the uh, at the board. Also, I wanna uh, I wanna um, thank the uh, St. Joe Bay Youth Ministry. Uh, what St. Joe Bay Youth Ministry is, is uh, it's a, it's a group of uh, the youth ministries in the locality of Port St. Joe. And they came together this past weekend with the youth uh, from all, all over the community to uh, help the needy. Uh, people that might be in need, needed grass, cut, uh, needed some limbs or whatever picked up. And we all came together with that group, and uh, I just want to give a huge shout out to them for for what they're doing. It's a project that they're just starting, and they're gonna continue with it, so a huge thank you to the, to the, to those who organized it, the St. Joe Bay Youth Ministry Group. So if you saw some kids around in the neighborhood in Port St. Joe, that was part of the St. Joe uh, Bay Youth Ministry. And you probably saw what gray t-shirts on with an anchor in front of it, what they're trying to do with all the negativity and everything that's going on in this world, we're trying to bring the the youth together and bringing the community together, so a huge shout out to those, uh, those people that organize that. I also want to make a um, a motion here to uh, and I know this probably ain't never been done, but I need to make this motion because uh, my parks and rec budget, what happened was I thought I was zeroed out on that budget, but I come to find out I had a few more dollars left over in that budget, and I hate for to lose that money that I know I can use in my parks and recs. I want to make a motion that my parks and rec budget carries over to the next uh, year's budget cycle.
Now, Commissioner, may I just, we're talking about the TDC.
Yes, yes.
A thousand dollars.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, my TDC.
Also, okay, uh, I'm gonna have to go here. That's under TDC. Mr. Turney get, or Mr., which one of you two gentlemen want to address this if we can?
The budget is final. The clerk would have to lead us in the right direction, taking steps to amend the budget. Now, I think that's what Rhonda would tell us. The um, the budget was approved, and it is what it is. In order to to recognize any additional money that may be unanticipated or we have, we'd have to make a budget amendment and and probably advertise a resolution for that. Maybe Rhonda could help us out. Sherry help us out.
Come on, Sherry, please.
Sherry didn't see you.
The, it would not be considered unanticipated because it's a cash carry forward. Um, the only way um, we could amend the budget to get that in it, in there without doing another public hearing um, is if it was something that could be adjusted from another line item or from reserves that are within the overall dollar amounts of the budget. Um, I can work with Jennifer on that if you would like and get back to you. Um, but we would not be able to amend the TDC dollar amount of the total budget.
Just turn it back over to TDC, trying to spin it.
Why don't you give it to the White City Boat Ranch?
If you, if you. If you give us a number, we we can figure out how to do it through reserves.
Or if you're looking at the information packet, uh, I have any. You have
Yes, I know.
Two thousand dollars and change.
Yeah.
I don't even know what I have. I have a check.
I can tell you right quick.
Yeah, I know.
On mine. Oh, have you?
Ryan's is low.
I just hate to lose twenty-two hundred.
Twenty-two hundred dollars. I still have twenty-one hundred. Let's look over here at you, Commissioner. While we're looking. Commissioner Macklemore, you got two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and four cents. Anyway, that's where we're at. Uh, let us, let's get back to serious point here. Let's see if we can work. I'm the same way. I ask uh, not putting anybody on the spot. I try to save mine because the parks that I have, I have one, the only park in the county that collects money, revenue. And I try to pay everything out of there and save the TDC for the end of the year, and usually go for playground, and here I have, I was, you know, you don't assume anything. I say, well, they'll wait till the last, and they'll buy me some playground equipment or whatever, because everything else is paid for with money collected from the users. Use that park up there. It doesn't cost taxpayers anything, but Commissioner Quinn, getting back to your
Yes.
Uh, you have a motion here to uh, what we can do or how we want to do it. We can, hopefully can work out something with the, uh, this young lady right over here and this lady here to, and with Ms. Adams to salvage your two thousand dollars for this year's budget. We've got a few more days now, but I don't, you know, you want to spend it wisely. I know you, you're a very conservative person.
Well, and with that, I will say also, I don't know um, if they do internal tracking on those balances for new invoices, but also anything that has not been paid yet may be outstanding if there's invoices, not, not speaking on your particular case, but there could be, you know, countywide, we are still paying bills sixty days past September thirtieth. So there are things still to come. Um, but I can work with Jennifer and Dawn and see what we could come up with and bring it back to the board for a potential budget amendment.
I think you got eight dollars.
Yeah, I'm I'm low. I had two big projects.
You got eight dollars.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to make a point on this and
Sure, okay.
I I think that this kind of shows the point that, and I know some commissioners aren't gonna like this, but we've got five districts and we got five thousand dollars for each district, but we have districts with a disproportionate amount of parks. So you've got some districts that have a lot of parks, trying to manage them with five thousand, and some districts that have few parks that get to spend five thousand. And I think that it would make a lot more sense for that twenty-five thousand to be distributed either by park or um, with either um, Mark or Jennifer, who are factoring in, looking at the parks, or Billy. Um, that really needs to be looked at by the park and not by the district. It's not a wise use of funds, so we need to look at it as we have twenty-five thousand dollars to maintain our parks. And I think that we would have much better looking parks overall. It's more equitable than five thousand per district. It's just a thought. We we really shouldn't be splitting everything five ways.
Good, all right. Now, let's go back. Commissioner Quinn, you had the floor, uh, uh, yeah, your motion, uh, where we at here? We done got. Everybody's up. You placed them.
Put the motion on the floor. So, Mr. Turner, do we need to?
Yeah, that's that's.
Yes, sir. Father, Mr. Butler, Ms. Herring, and they're gonna, um, they'll find it through the reserves or is it gonna be in a budget amendment? Sherry's recommendation was without a public hearing and going through a budget resolution and amendment, that if they can find an ability to do the cash carry or find it from reserves, they'll come back at the next meeting, make that recommendation, so you wouldn't have to go through the notice, the advertisement, and the uh, entire public hearing for the two thousand dollars. There's a much more cost effective way of doing it, so if we can come back with that recommendation in your October meeting, we'll do that so that you can preserve your two thousand moving into the next year.
So we don't need a motion.
No motion.
So I withdraw my motion.
All right, thank you, sir.
And.
Mr. Quinn, you still have the floor, sir.
That's all I have, sir.
Quinn, uh, on that same note, if you are able to do that, and you can do that same thing for my local travel, which I don't take, that I would like to spend on possibly um, rebuilding a beach walkover, if you're able to push that forward, I would like to push those funds forward also, so if you can check on that, um, if that would fall under the same guidelines.
Okay, um, I can take both of those and look into them. It would be, um, if we're not going to hold a public hearing and do a, go through the full budget process, which has to be advertised in the paper and all that. Then it, then it would be a budget amendment, basically changing your numbers within your existing um, fund. It has to stay within the same funds. Um, since those are both dealing with year-end values, my recommendation would be actually to wait till we find out what those final year-end numbers are, which are going to be in December, and make those budget amendments as we come into January when we know, um, when we have unaudited final numbers, because it may not be two thousand. Um, may not be forty-eight hundred. I don't know what that number is. I'm sorry, uh, five thousand or whatever it may be.
It should be whatever's there.
But um, yes, that is something we could do as a budget amendment if you give me specifics of where it's wanting to be allocated.
Thank you.
Right, three hundred and seventy-six. Thank you, Commissioner. That's all. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, Sheriff, I have a couple of three items. Uh, yesterday, Mr. Butler and I uh, met with the safety staff with DOT on Highway twenty-two and County Road Five. And we left there all in agreement that we do have an issue there. And uh, we're gonna address some of it on the county side on Road Five, and they're going to address the issue on State Road Twenty-two. They saw that, and they were unaware, this is uh, that the largest, there's two plumes at the end of Road Five out there, and when a shift change, I know uh, uh, and I appreciate you having a deputy in that area, usually around shift change, because it's havoc out there. But uh, anyway, I want you to know that we, after, and Captain Buchanan, I don't know if he's here, he helped work that wreck out there, and it could have been very tragic. It was serious enough as it was, but uh, anyway, we're working on that. We are, and I want you to know that. I want you to know that. Uh, another thing, ladies and gentlemen, we're very busy. I've got a full schedule this week and next week also, but there's a lot of things fixing to start happening in this county. And uh, it's not gonna happen in the morning. But it's, the wheels are in motion, and we we're going to uh, hopefully here in very short terms, we're gonna see some good activity here in Gulf County. It'll be good for the county. It'll put a little money into our county. Things will start turning around for us, but anyway, I've, say, I got a meeting, I think, uh, today, no tomorrow, is it? Anyway, every day this week, I got something going on, but it's for the interest of Gulf County, to help the good people in Gulf County and surrounding areas. I just want to bring that to your attention. That's all I have. Uh, now, let's go to item number five, Mr. Holly. Are you with us this morning? Good morning, sir. EDC Director.
Good morning, Commissioner.
EDC Updates. Good morning, sir.
Got three requests this morning, um, and I apologize if the agreements weren't in the agenda. I just got the DEO grant agreement late Friday afternoon, so the first item, and I have copies if you want me to distribute them, but I I think y'all are aware that we were awarded a technical assistance grant by the state to do freight logistics zone study at site work and logistic work, intermodal work in four counties, Gulf, Franklin, Liberty, and Gadsden. Um, this is gonna try to connect the port with the airport in Franklin, the rail system, the ANN line that runs up through those four counties all the way to Gadsden, where it connects with the CSX line and the interstate system. It's a sixty-five thousand dollar grant agreement, and I'm asking for the board to uh, accept the agreement subject to the manager and the attorney's review. It just got in late Friday, authorized the chairman to execute that grant agreement for sixty-five thousand dollars for that regional study. Uh, there's a summit on October twelfth at ten AM in Bristol. Uh, I've included the chairman and other folks, the manager, and uh, in in a list of, if you're interested in going, that, it's open to the public. Again, October twelfth, ten AM in Bristol, at their community center there, our first kickoff meeting.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Macklemore. I hear second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any further board discussion? But anyone in the audience? The opposition? Having none, motion passed five and oh.
Second, second item is uh, is related to the first item and uh, in working with the staff and the attorney, uh, we only have a year, the state fiscal year, to do this this technical assistance grant. We've already got three months that have gone by.
The state.
The state's fiscal year. Yep, July one. Um, so uh, we've been working with the Regional Planning Council. Chris Ratao is the executive director of RPC. He's here in the audience. If you have questions, RPC. Uh, but we have uh, elements of the of the grant that uh, have been pulled together. There are comprehensive planning work, there's transportation planning work, site work. And we felt that the RPC was the right organization to kind of coordinate all of it and put the the consultants together that would do a good job for for all four counties. So the second item uh, is subject to the manager and the attorney's review of an agreement with RPC to administer this uh, grant with uh, with my guidance along the way. You need a motion? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Barnes. Here, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any other board discussion, any board members, anyone in the audience? Uh, any opposition? No opposition? Motion passed five and oh.
The third request, uh, uh, the chairman's already mentioned a lot of activity going on, so there's been a lot of 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 interest in our area. Uh, obviously, there's, there, the news has come out that the Eastern Shipbuilding Company is gonna be awarded the Coast Guard contract. Uh, I'll tell you that, you know, I get asked every day, you know, what's gonna happen in Gulf County, and and I wish I could tell you exactly what was gonna happen in Gulf County. Uh, I think we all feel that there are things that are gonna happen. We just don't know exactly what their plan is. We are traveling tomorrow to meet with Eastern and and begin the dialogue. Obviously, we want to be very supportive of of them standing up a shipbuilding operation here in our port. You're where they own property and have property under lease with St. Joe Company. And so very exciting uh, news there. Uh, we also have another company that's been looking at the Arizona Chemical Site, uh, very close to possibly entering into a lease through the Port Authority on the Arizona site. So many of you know that we've been working with state DOT on getting the rail repaired, and that they've made commitments that the funding to repair the rail will be available when we have a company that wants to use the rail. So what I'm asking today is for the board to authorize the chair to co-sign a letter with the Port Authority to DOT. There's a three-step process to get that money released by DOT. The first is just a request for the availability of funding. I'm being told by DOT, it'll probably have to go to the budget committee, the state budget committee, because it's not in the work program. So it's gonna take us some time to go through that process. The second step will be, we'll have to submit um, an estimate of the number of jobs and capital investment by the companies involved. And the third step is provide DOT with proof that the company actually has a lease or purchase of property in the port area. So the company that we're working with. So, the company that we're working with, uh, has already given, uh, letters to me that we can submit to DOT in terms of their request to use it, but we want it to be a joint, uh, request from both the county and, and the Port Authority. So, it's just authorization for the chairman to sign a letter to DOT once we get this lease signed.
I hear a motion.
I move.
Motion by Commissioner Barnes. Your second. Second by Commissioner Quinn. Further board discussion, one in the audience? Any opposition? Signature, motion passed 5-0.
You know, other than that, um, you know, we do have some other folks, uh, in town this week doing work. We've got the Genesis Wyoming Rail Engineers in town. For those of you who've been around a long time, you know that the rail's in kinda different pieces and parts right now, with the interest from Eastern, with the interest from the, the Woodship Company. You know, uh, we're, we're gonna ask them to assess the condition of the rail in terms of its service to both the old mill site, the Arizona Chemical Site, Premier, MTI, the Eastern Site, you know, we've got some other sites that have been identified that we wanna see if we can get rail to, so it'll be good work, Genesis Wyoming folks and some of their VPs with the engineering in town. I wanna thank you for making the Advisory Board appointments this morning as part of your consent agenda. I've got a great Advisory Board, uh, very active. Sometimes they don't all agree on the way things should be done, but they're very active. I wanna try to make sure that we stay very positive with our approach to economic development. I've told you before, you know, people watch us. We got Triumph Funding that's on the table, we got a lot of work ahead of us. And I just think we're, we need all be on the same page and, and be positive about what's happening here in Gulf County, so, thank you very much.
Alright, so, Mr. Holly. I work closely with you on things, and I wanna not only thank you, I wanna thank your staff and the board members. Remember, those, these are volunteers people. We were talking earlier about trying to get volunteers for fire departments. It's, it's a job to get out there, and you have a good group. As you said, sometimes they don't, we don't all agree, but we all leave there pulling in the right direction. That's what it's all about, and, uh, you, you, they have really here put a lot of work into this, and I, I wanna thank you.
We have a meeting in the morning for anyone that's interested.
Exactly.
Chairman's gonna go through his annual process of, uh, training board members, the four that you appointed.
I thought you have a meeting in the morning.
We do, right here in this room, so you're welcome to join us.
Right, it's open to the public. Thank you, sir, thank you. Oh, yeah, let me recognize, uh, Mr. Rito over here, Chris. Uh, he's, he heads up our Appalachian Regional Planning Council, which Gulf County is one of nine counties there, and, uh, I apologize on behalf of, I think, Mr. Hammond, I'm gonna lay the blame on him, that we missed the walk color. I was looking forward to going down on this aquaculture. And, uh, but we'll see you in Tallahassee at the next meeting.
Looking forward to it.
Alright.
Very excited to work with, uh, Mr. Holly on his projects.
Well, we, we thank you, and, uh, we're looking forward, hopefully we can get Bruce on board here very shortly. And get things rolling. Also, ladies and gentlemen, back in the, uh, Representative, Quinn Graham's representative will be over at the fire station. Is that correct? From 11 till 12 o'clock. If you have any questions here, this is young man you wanna see. Thank you for taking time to come over and, and give the Congress lady, you know, our best and all from Gulf County, and thank you for, for, thank her for letting you come over and be a part of us.
Roger that, sir, I'll pass the law.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Mr. Bobby Neay. Go ahead, Price. Gene? Come on up, young man.
I wanna thank you Commissioners, uh, for forwarding me this time. My name is Gene B. Hage. I am a director with the Coastal Community Association. And I promise to be short and succinct with this, but what, uh, we are asking is to get the speed limit reinstated back to 55 miles an hour, going from, uh, Route 98, this is on 30A.
30A.
30A, going from 30A to the Franklin County Line. Now, the exceptions on this, of course, would be at Simmons Bayou, the curve, and, uh, to, in, uh, to the raw bar. And then pass that back to 55. And the rationale for this is, uh, basically very simple in the fact that, um, it was, prior to the road resurfacing, was 55 miles per hour, from my understanding, talking with, uh, various people. And the road was resurfaced, uh, with new shoulders added, which made it basically six to eight feet wider, and of course, the trees were removed from the safety factor, uh, on the course, the sides of the road. So, um, I don't believe that, uh, there was ever near, ever any movement to return the speed limit back to the 55, which it was prior. So, that is basically what we're looking to do, um, with the exceptions that I mentioned. And, uh, I would like to thank, uh, Jerry Barnes, Sheriff Mike, and Don for helping me go the circuitous route to find out who actually owns the roads, because I didn't understand that in total. So, that's, that's basically our request. Any questions?
I don't, Commissioner Barnes?
Well, I, I would just like to make a motion that we allow our engineers to determine the recommended speed limit for that area, and all the way to the, to the Franklin County Line. And we can allow the public works to post according to whatever we need, and we'll go from there. If it's, uh, Mr. Butler may have, he and I rode the other day and, and looking at it, and, uh, you got anything to add to that, I, don't I make that motion?
Commissioner, talking with the engineers, there's a manual, clear zone manual, clear zone. Some of those trees are closed, some are not closed. There stretches in there that probably very well can be 55. You mentioned Simmons Bayou, now that's on state portion. Uh, the county portion starts what we call Dead Man Curve from 30E, always Franklin County Line. I think your letter, your email specifically was between 30B and Franklin County Line.
Correct, and I've, I've spoken, it's the second part with Sheriff Mike Harrison, which of course is the State Road from 30A to Cape San, uh, the curve at Cape San Blas.
So, the, uh, engineers, the, the, there's a manual, DOT's got a manual, and the clear zone, if the trees is, you know, for instance, 12 feet from the edge of Black Top, that's one speed limit. If it's 16 or 20 feet from the Black Top, you can have a greater speed limit. So, my understanding, Commissioner, your recommendation is whatever the manual says, whatever it will allow, to allow that speed limit.
Right, right.
Maximum speed.
That's true.
Uh, and I second that motion. I don't even know why anybody would wanna go over 55 anyway, down there, it's beautiful. I don't.
Not many people do stick with the 45. Just put it that way.
Alright, we have a, you play, place a motion on the floor. Commissioner Barnes, alright, and we got a second by Commissioner McLemore. Right on this issue, any further board discussion on this speed limit issue here, where we're gonna work? Butler, you'll work with that and get back. Anyone in the audience, any concerns? Not, no opposition, motion passed 5-0. Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Sheriff, we've, we've, we're good. Uh, item number nine of 10, uh, Ms. Katrina Saunders, Weahatchka Medical Center Quarterly Report. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, young lady, how are you today?
I have with me Pat Walker.
Uh-huh.
She is our outreach and enrollment worker, and instead of having to listen to me talk, I wanted her to give a chance, um, to give a report to the Commissioners and to the public about the services she has to offer. We are coming up on open enrollment for, um, uh, medical coverage, and Pat, um, has great services that she's able to offer to any of our community members.
Good, good morning, Ms. Walker.
Good morning.
Good morning to you.
My name is Pat Walker, and I just wanted to talk briefly about the Affordable Health Care Open Enrollment through the marketplace. Open Enrollment will begin November 1st, 2016, and it'll go up until January 31st, 2017. For open enrollment, uh, health coverage through the marketplace, you do have to have taxable income in order to be eligible for health care, health coverage, I'm sorry, through the marketplace. So, one of the services that we do provide at Weahatchka Medical Center is to assist those in the community with the application process. For those who are not eligible, because not everyone will be eligible, for those who are not eligible, another service that we do provide is Medicaid, assisting individuals with the Medicaid application process. One of the things that we've found, uh, not only in this community, but in several communities, are parents who have children, but the parents don't have health insurance. They just assume that their children are not eligible. And within the state of Florida, all children under 18 are eligible for health care through Medicaid, primarily through Florida Healthy Kids. And that too is another service that we do provide. So, I would just ask that if there are any in the community who do not have health insurance, to please give us a call, 850-639-5828, and allow me an opportunity to see if we might be able to assist you.
Alright. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And if I could just add.
Sure, sure.
Pat's services are just so wonderful, and, um, it, when, um, community members come in and have her help, she sits with them, you know, for as long as it takes, two and three hours. And the response that we've heard back from the community members that she's helped has been overwhelmingly positive. So, um, your help and allowing us this forum to speak, to get this information out to the community, it's very much appreciated.
Alright, and as always, it's not restricted to Weahatchka.
Absolutely.
It's the entire county, and I think even in some of Franklin and Bay is more than welcome, but, uh...
And I can't stress enough that this is a community service.
Exactly.
There's no charge, and you do not have to be a patient of Weahatchka Medical Center. So, just let them know to call the center and that they need to speak to Pat Walker.
Good.
Okay?
And I do have information that I could leave if they want contact. I do have information flyers.
Pat, thank you so much. Katrina, thank you. You ladies have a safe trip back. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes, we're down to the last item, public discussion. Does anyone in the audience have anything before the board? Anyone in the audience? We have one, anyone else? I see one, two, three, four. Alright, well, come on, Ms., uh, McElroy, please.
Court St. Joe. So, in your consent agenda, you approved the appointees.
You what now?
In, in your consent agenda, you approved the EDC appointees. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, uh, staff made their recommendation, specifically the director of the EDC, and you approved that recommendation. Does that pretty much sum it up? Okay.
Well, four names were submitted.
Correct.
We advertised for one month.
Yeah.
Only had four names, we had four openings, we had four applicants.
I, I get it.
So...
I understand.
Well, anyway.
At, at the last two meetings ago, I mentioned, you know, and came before you with your own, uh, policy, and I'll give this to the clerk again, uh, for the guidelines for the EDC. I also mentioned, uh, that there was a violation of, of that policy by a board member. And one of the, the board member that you approved today was the one that violated it. At your last meeting, that was, I believe, a special meeting, I had put forth this document that I'll hand out to you again. I did see that you all read it. And so, uh, I guess my concern is, and I couldn't agree more with Mr. Holly, we need to cultivate a positive place in order to assist with economic development. And being, uh, a part of it, uh, everyone should have their say, but it should be in a diplomatic and constructive way. Shouldn't be slanderous, shouldn't be accusatory. And the person that is, uh, is trying to put their, their thoughts forth, they shouldn't be aggressive in those thoughts. So, you know, at one point, and we have the Appalachian Planning Council here, and the county attorney reminded me that at one point, you know, they felt like our Commissioner, Brian, uh, didn't do the right thing in that council meeting. And so, she was removed, and you were her replacement. So, there is a precedent set that the county attorney reminded me of, of removal when you personally attack someone. So, I think it's very important here that we need to be consistent with decorum, with alleviating personal attacks. And if those things happen, then there should be consequences in order to continue to cultivate a positive atmosphere for the county. I'll, I'll just ask one more question. I just wonder why a director would decide that when he saw somebody being attacked and you had to call order, that he would recommend somebody that did the attacking on that member. I think I have a pretty good idea of why that recommendation happened. With that, I'm going to hand out the letter that you got last time dated September 6th that you all read. And, uh, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to, I was brought into this, I would like to make a statement.
Have anything else?
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, and I think we have about four more people could.
I'll, I'll try to keep it brief.
Be brief, please, thank you.
I, I just wanna say that this board did remove me from the Regional Planning Council. That was because I got in the way of something that this board wanted to accomplish, or the members of this board wanted to accomplish. I didn't agree with it, but that's what happened, and we move on. I stated my opinion at that meeting, I wasn't happy, but we move on. Now, no one else on this EDC board has come to me with any issues about what has happened in the meetings. I wasn't at the meeting that Ms. McElroy refers to, but no one else has come to me to complain. When we get into this arena of politics, it's a difficult arena, it's tough. Many people say politics is a blood sport, and these committees that we form are a part of that. And you're gonna have an opinion, and somebody else is gonna have an opinion, and you've gotta be willing to go in there and stand up for your opinion, but so are they. And I think good debate and arguments, and it should get heated, 'cause these things matter. But you cannot continually come before this board like a wounded puppy and say that we should go in and refer, remove somebody from a committee. And Ms. McElroy, you have done more than your share of dishing out attacks, starting five years ago when you stood at that podium and attacked many members of this community who were not here to defend themselves, who were not up here on this board. You wanna come attack us, that's, I think that's what we're here for. Now, you shouldn't come up here and, you know, be foul, or, but if you disagree with us, come up here and tell us. And in these committee meetings, you should have spirited debate. And my understanding of, of what your fellow board member brought up, he didn't care for things that you were going around in this community attacking people in the community. He didn't feel that was the proper role. Now, you've just got to put on that thick skin and go in and argue your point, and when you lose, you lose. It doesn't mean you stop arguing, but you can't come and, and, and say, you know, remove them. Now, the other side of that is, my opinion, I don't know what the statute says, but, or if the statute says anything, or what our procedure says, but we have a position on that EDC for someone from the city. And in my opinion, the city should choose who that is. And in my opinion, the city should choose who that is. Whoever the city votes, the city council vote to put on our EDC, we should respect that. So, you know, enough of this, let's, let's move on. You can, you can argue your point all you want at your committee meeting, but don't, we're not mommy and daddy, and we're not gonna come in and, and save it. I don't see anything, y- you know, no laws have been violated, just, just suck it up and, and keep fighting.
Thank you. All right, I saw some other hands come up. No, you've already been a, uh, Ms., uh, you want to come up, uh, I asked you, did you have anything else?
I do.
Pat, come on, dear.
We did not have a controversial committee meeting, we had a very calm committee meeting of a FEMA map challenge. Um, we met on September fourteenth, uh, we're making some progress. All the committee members were present, county attorney was present, Ralph Rish from Pebble Ridge was present. Brett had invited Northwest Florida Water Management Group and Dewberry again, which was very good. They brought more detailed maps, based on our prev- previous request from the meeting before. Um, I think they gave us a lot more information in the maps that they had. Um, the members of the committees asked for clarification, we went through some different things. By asking for the clarification in the maps and getting more detail, we had talked about three thousand properties that were going to be affected. We're down to fourteen hundred and forty-odd properties that will, uh, move from an X to an A, E, or V, E, that have homes on them, okay? This is a big insurance issue, where we can't necessarily remodel homes, move them out of the things, and whether or not you would lose your home having gone to a high insurance rate. Um, so, we're, we're wheeling it down, if you want to look at it that way. Uh, we wanted to ask them to come back again and do some more, uh, models on those that are existing then, uh, seeing if we can keep some out, from moving out of the X, or keep them at least from moving out of the V, E, which is the most, uh, uh, har- most horrendous designation, it's one that costs you the most. Major challenges, it, it's, it's across the whole county. Uh, it looks like, when you look, it, I can't give you exact numbers, but downtown Port St. Joe, uh, north, sort of Port St. Joe, uh, is gonna be the most percentage affected. Uh, Indian Pass is gonna be affected badly, uh, St. Joe, uh, Beach, uh, Beacon Hill area, got big there, uh, the Cape, and then, uh, it's, it's like Joseph Peninsula, but actually more down in this area. Um, they confirmed that, you know, we, we, again, there was a, there's a ninety-day challenge period for individuals to be able to challenge on a basis, we talked about that last time. By bringing up this new request, the committee bringing up this new request from Northwest Florida Management to go back and, and impose some more models on these things, what we've done is to extend that, or remove that clock starting. The clock will not start until the county's request to resolve these things. Now, that makes these individuals have the county go through, the individual property owner, will have the county go through and resolve it, they can't do anything, as opposed to those individuals having to go spend their own money to try to find out if whether or not something can be done. So, Brett, I think, very positive movement, don't you? Um, I want to tell you, the Northwest Florida Management and Dewberry climbed on board with this. They've already sent us another email back that they're going to impose some other things on it. Can I keep going?
Yeah, I, I want to hear it.
And, uh, we, we were told that, that it would, like I said, it's gonna extend this out.
People's houses, no.
It'll probably stall, not the wrong term, it'll probably postpone the starting of the implementation of the map by six months to, or more. Saves you an insurance premium for this year. All right, but Brett, they, they have come back and are going to do some more modeling for us.
They are, uh, one thing I do want to say is, the Water Management District, I mean, is going overboard. You just don't see this type of thing happen whenever you've got a map, flood map revision. Um, they're, I mean, it's, it's great to see that they're doing this, it helps. Uh, Bo Spring, he serves on the Water Management Board, so that helps hugely. So, uh, it is, like Dr. Pat said, it is gonna back the, the map approval up, um, probably to middle of two thousand and eighteen. So, just keep that in mind, uh, when you're talking to your constituents, um, it, but they are, they're working hard to get, get a lot of these houses taken out of these, uh, that, that were going into the As and the Vs, uh, keeping on, in those X flood zones, so, um, it's, it, a lot of hard work being done.
All right.
It, it is. It is complicated, but I didn't think y'all would mind us postponing the implementation.
Absolutely, I don't, I, uh, let me, uh, thank you.
We'll have another meeting, and I'll keep you up to date, and, and as soon as anything happens that we can get to the public, uh, for them to have to act, we will do so. We was a different ballgame.
Yeah, we're a little bit higher up. Uh, let me go right over here to Commissioner Quinn, Commissioner Quinn.
We need to, I wanted to make that motion to extend, uh, Dr. Pat's time.
There you go.
Thank you.
You motioned it.
And I'll second it.
Second it, so done.
Appreciate it.
We're in a second time, thank you, Pat, uh, I saw a couple of more gentlemen, uh, yeah. Uh, Mr. Mayor, sir.
Mayor Bo Patterson, six over nine, Tenth Street, Port St. Joe, Florida. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, rest of the commissioners, how y'all doing? Glad you let me come up and speak to you today. Uh, you know, the city, we tear down houses from time to time, uh, and in the past, of course, when the county was operating a landfill, they helped us with tipping fees and things. Well, now, you're not controlling the landfill, Waste Pro is. So, the only thing today is I asked you, requested, on our behalf to city, that you would go to Waste Pro and talk for us and see if they would do the same thing on tipping fees. We've got about eight houses, all in Mr. Quinn's district, we're ready to tear them down. We've got permission from everybody, everything's been done that needs to be done. We just need a way to get rid of them once we tear them down. And so, if y'all could just help us out there by just talking to Waste Pro, I'm gonna be talking with them too, Mr. Butler, I wish you would, I know you will, and, uh, just see can't we get this tipping fee out of the way so we can get these houses tore down? But we need them tore down.
Uh, we have a meeting today, two o'clock, is that correct, Mr. Butler? I was, see, this brought up, Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate it.
We got a two o'clock meeting with Waste Pro.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Uh, gentleman over here, yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, I remember him. Mr. Roland, come on up, sir.
I'm Roland Wilson, seventy-one, fifty-one, Cape San Blas Road. Simple question, why cannot meeting dates and times and agendas be put in the newspaper? I listened all this time, money floating around, some you knew you had, some you didn't know you had. Consent agenda, county employee got fifty dollars each. And yet, we cannot get a thing in a newspaper about a meeting and a time or an agenda. I got this from the Kofla Community Association. Good example is a budget meetings. City, uh, Port St. Joe, Mexico Beach, had their meeting dates and the summary of the budget in the paper. I looked for the county, nothing. Surely, with as much money as we floating around, we can afford to put something in the newspaper in a timely manner where people will know about it. Special meetings, it's seldom, in my opinion, that is so special that it can't be advertised. I can understand an emergency meeting, floods, hurricanes, whatever, but not just a special meeting. It would appear you're trying to hide something. Ten years ago, there was a study by some university of this county government. Main conclusion was then, lack of transparency. If it were done today, it'd probably be double that. Do something to get the word out.
Much, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, uh, come on up, Kenny.
Good morning. Mike Barrett, one five seven Polaris Drive. I wanted to follow up with what Commissioner Barnes said in praising the South Gulf Fire Department. We have, uh, we're exceptionally lucky to have a chief out there that, um, he spends forty to fifty hours a week, so we're very blessed. A couple of issues, he also brought up about recruitment. Forty-plus years ago, when I first started in fire service, I was ten-foot tall and bulletproof. Obviously, it's been a little bit of change since then. Um, our average age of firefighters out there is in the fifties. So, recruitment, uh, like you said, it's a big issue. Some of the things that I would like to see done, maybe countywide, is a networking for, um, recruitment. You know, I, I get more information from Dr. Pat on the CCA blog than I do CNN News. And so, I think if we reach out to some of the community action groups, um, that's a good, uh, good way to get some, some people inspired, interested. One of the other things I think we could, should look at, as far as bringing up the youth, is get with the Boy Scout and Girl Scout groups. They have, um, different badges and stuff that they can earn for community service, public safety, first aid. That would be a great way to get younger people involved, and plus, it helps them. Uh, two other things, I'd like to thank Mr. Houston here. Um, he had an ambulance crew come out Sunday to the State Park for the, uh, Appreciation Day. We appreciated them coming out, although, once they got out there and just started to eat, they had to leave, but that's the nature of the beast. And then also, this morning, about six o'clock, we had a medical call out on the, out on the Cape, and I want to compliment your crew. They came out there, is right towards the end of their twenty-four-hour shift, but they were there, they were personal, very humane, very professional, and I just wanted, I know we always hear when the bad stuff goes on, so I think the, the good stuff needs to be broadcast out there. And I just wanted to thank EMS, and I want to thank Mr. Barnes for his help with the fire service out there, and, um, that's what we're there for. But, uh, we have to have support from y'all to be able to do what we do. Um, just statistic-wise, so, just to show the inherent danger of the firefighter profession, uh, US Fire Administration, they keep the statistics of, uh, fatalities for firefighters. And so far this year's been...
Hold just a minute here, uh, Austin, I want you to see this time here is fixed on this, or whoever's.
I'll make a motion to extend.
All right, we got a motion over here, we got a second. Go ahead, Mike.
The only other statistic I wanted to, to read is that US Fire Administration, they keep fire fatalities of firefighters in the United States. So far this year, we've had sixty-five fatalities nationwide. Thirty-two of them have been volunteer firefighters.
Mm-hmm.
And so, my point is, is that we are blessed with the volunteers that we have in this county who risk their lives for free. And we need to do everything that we can to show support to them and help recruit with them and be, be their advocates. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something?
Yes, sir, you can, I've been part of that organization for a long time.
Hey, I appreciate y'all, because, and I was talking to someone not too long ago, and they said, well, maybe you ought to do this, you, I said, let me tell you something. I don't tell those people how to run that fire department, they are volunteers, but if they need help, I'm gonna be there for them, so...
One of the many great things about firefighters I've found over the years is that, regardless if we have the proper assets that we need, we overcome, we adapt, and we get it done. We're gonna do the job.
I agree.
And, um, all we ask is that we have continued support and additional support as we go down the road so we can do this.
Deal.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you very much for the compliment there. But anyone else? McElroy, you already been recognized once. Is this a different subject?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll recognize you on a different subject.
On a different subject, that flag represents the United States of America, and we have a little thing called the Constitution and Freedom of Speech. And it shouldn't, it, I shouldn't have my, uh, Freedom of Speech inhibited because it has a chilling impact upon my life. I've been sued in this county. I've had horrible things, uh, from a wiretap said about me because of this county and because of a political action committee that supported you.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, whoa, 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 wait a minute. Kate, let, let's hold both, let's hold, no, no, I have the floor. Now, I am not addressing personal problems here. I address business, I'm sorry, I'm the one that has to do it. You know, it'd be a lot easier on me if I was sitting over here.
I know.
Maybe the commissioner here, I catch a lot of flak, but let's leave our personal stuff, mine's out there in my old Mustang.
Yes, sir.
I'm in here representing this county.
Yes, sir.
And so, let's, let's keep these personal attacks.
Similarly speaking...
Out of this meeting, now, you mentioned something about the flag.
Similarly speaking, Mr., Mr. Chairman, I expect the same thing from the board on personal attacks. You know that the county was sued, and I was sued because of, I, I understand that. So, my point is, I'm well aware of what politics brings with it. I'm well aware that it's a blood sport, Mr. Chairman. But that flag represents freedom of speech.
Thank you.
Let's not forget it.
Thank you, anyone else? Motion to go home.
Second.
Just a minute, I have a motion in a second. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for taking the time to come out this morning. Motion is in order, we are standing adjourned.